Call to order, October 28th, Port Orchard City Council, regular meeting and remind of us of our guiding principles and the actions that we're about to take. Are we raising the bar in all of our actions? Are we honoring the past but not living in the past? Are we building positive connections with our community and outside partners? This is decision-making process, building a diverse, equitable, and inclusive community. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have a published agenda. Councilmember Teneri, I think you have a couple of proposed amendments.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add to the consent agenda, which would be item H, the excusal of Councilmember Morrissey for personal reasons.
Second.
By Councilmember Teneri, and a second by Councilmember Fenton, to excuse Councilmember Morrissey for personal reasons, and that would be consent item H. All in favor of adding that item? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that has been added.
I'd like to make a amendment, too.
Mayor has a second one.
Yeah, I'd like to add to business item D, a presentation, I guess, or a change order for the Frederick's Plaza downtown here.
No, it's not. It's a change order for the Marina Pump Station Project.
Oh, excuse me. We don't have any documentation. It's on its way here.
It was emailed to you earlier today, but Dennis is going down, bringing you a copy, and you'll have it on the dais before you take action on it. But it'll be...
Is that business item D?
It'll be...
Is that what we discussed earlier?
Yes. Yeah. So, it'll be business item D, and you'll have a hard copy for your review prior to getting to that item. Dennis just didn't know he needed to bring you a paper copy when he walked it on.
Come on, Dennis.
You can only play the new guy for so long.
That's what I was gonna say. He's not granning along.
So, Councilmember Teneri made a motion to add that. Is there a second?
Second, yeah.
Second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe, to add business item D, which is a change order for the Marina Pump Station Project. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that item is added. Councilmember Fenton, you had something you wanted to add?
Yes, I would like to make amendment to the consent agenda for item number D to put onto business.
Second to remove that?
Second.
And that would be to take business item D and make it E. E. A... All in favor of moving business i... consent item D and making it the new business item E? Please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Passes five to one. All right. We are... Any other proposed amendments?
No, I was gonna make a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
The motion by Councilmember Rosa Pepe, a second by Councilmember Chang, to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
And the agenda has been set for tonight. All right. We are to our first citizen comment, and anyone wishing to address the council has three minutes, and please identify yourself for the record.
Robert McGee, 2065 Bay Street. Good evening. The last time I came before this body, I tried to go through the front door to use the process as it was intended, only to have that door slammed in my face by the very system that's supposed to serve its citizens. You have before you a letter approved by every business required to hold a cabaret license, along with support from the South Kitsap Chamber of Commerce, which represents the broader business community. That correspondent lays out the details and will, I hope, provide the clarity and perhaps the humility needed to understand the scope of this policy's folly. I'm not here representing one frustrated owner. I'm here on behalf of every single business this ordinance touches, and not one supports it. You've somehow achieved the impossible, total unity against City Hall. The MRSC, the same resource the city relies on for legal guidance, describes cabaret licenses as, and I quote, "relics of the early 20th century regulation, originally aimed at policing morality and gatherings now governed by modern building, fire, and liquor ordinances." Every reason this ordinance once existed has already been replaced. Keeping it now is like keeping a horse trough in front of a parking garage. A nice piece of history, but not much use to anyone driving by. The ordinance isn't about safety or oversight; it's redundancy dressed as regulation. The mayor apparently spoke to a business owner who claimed the license application only takes 10 minutes. That's adorable, like saying quicksand's fine because you sink faster. We spoke to every actual business required to hold this license, and not one supports this nonsense. So unless there's a cabaret operating at a City Hall, that story belongs in fiction. Even if it were 10 minutes, the speed of a pointless process doesn't make it meaningful. A short pointless rule is still a pointless rule. Beyond its outdated purpose, the administration of this ordinance has raised serious concerns. Council took action on an agenda item labeled "no action to be taken." That's not a clerical error; that's a procedural failure. Staff have used the license as leverage in unrelated matters, effectively turning it into a tool of extortion. There is dialogue about background checks on karaoke hosts, something the police department correctly stated there was no legal authority to do. When process becomes arbitrary, enforcement becomes personal, and that's not how good governance operates. Several business owners actually hesitated into signing on, not because they disagreed, but because they were afraid of retaliation, extra inspections, or delayed permits. That kind of fear has no place in local government. We live in a constitutional republic, not a permission-based bureaucracy. Citizens should never have to choose between honesty and security when addressing their own city council, and I can assure you, we don't do fear-based compliance. Our request is simple and lawful. Repeal Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 5.2. Forgive and refund all related fees and penalties to date. Cease enforcement immediately. No committees, no delays, just correction of a mistake. In closing, this ordinance does not protect the public or enhance safety. It merely reminds the business community that City Hall has yet to acknowledge an outdated law when it sees one. The business of Port Orchard have met every real standard, every inspection, every tax, every code. What they ask now is not special treatment, but simple fairness. Repeal this ordinance, restore confidence in this chamber, and give our citizens a glimmer of hope that this government still knows how to say the three most respectable words in public service: we were wrong.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the city council?
Hi, Kristi McGee, Port Orchard. I'm gonna piggyback on some of what Robert talked about, the real cost of doing business in Port Orchard. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and staff. I'm here on behalf of Port Orchard businesses that already follow every rule, pay every fee, and pass every inspection the city and state require, and who are now being asked to pretend the cabaret license serves some kind of purpose. Let's be honest, it doesn't. It adds nuisance fee, not safety. Bureaucracy, not benefit. Before a business even opens its doors, it must comply with state building code, the fire code, the liquor and cannabis board regulations, and the health district standards. Those already over occupancy... those already cover occupancy, fire protection, and sanitation, everything that actually matters to public safety. The cabaret license is just more red tape stabled on top of that. Between inspections for fire systems, alarms, extinguishers, exit lighting, kitchen hoods, backflow devices, and multiple layers of city-state and health licensing, the average small business in Port Orchard spends $8,000 to $10,000 a year just staying compliant. And after all, the city still makes us pay again to upload proof of those same inspections into the online system. So yes, we pay to do the work, and then we pay again to prove what we did, that we did it. If that's your idea of efficient government, explains a lot. The Municipal Research and Service Center, your own advisory resource, calls cabaret licenses relics of the 20th century regulation made unnecessary by modern fire, building, and liquor codes. So why is Port Orchard still clinging to one? The cabaret license doesn't make the city safer; it doesn't make businesses better; it doesn't even make sense. It's a law in search of a reason, and the only thing it actually accomplishment... accomplishes is reminding small business owners who holds the stamp. So here's the act. Please repeal POMC Chapter 5.20, refund the fees, and stop charging us twice for the same compliance, because right now it feels like City Hall is less interested in public safety and more interested in seeing how much red tape a business will tolerate before it gives up. And that should embarrass anyone who claims to represent this community. We do our part, every inspection, every license, every year. It's time the city did its part, too. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
What else wishing to address the council this evening? Okay, we're going to close the first citizen comment period?
Wait.
Is there anybody online? Do you use the...
I am a... I'm a part-owner with Island Lumbia, which is a food vendor. I'm here because, first of all, there's a lady by the name Angela Garcia that's really making it difficult for us to do anything. We've ran it down, and we've been back and forth with her, and there's just no budget. As soon as we solve something, another thing, another situation is brought up, and it's just... it's like, it doesn't go against... it goes totally against what you guys read when we started this meeting. It's not inviting for businesses; it's basically keeping us out. We already have all... we have all of our operating permits, our business licenses. Everything that we... everything on our end has been covered. What I would like is, I would like to maybe have a meeting with the director of this, whoever is in charge, because we are piloting a program for Mason County right now, a street vendor permit, and so we're permit 00001, and we're just seeing, working all the bugs out for them. And I would like to bring the same thing to Port Orchard. You know, you guys, there's so much room for businesses around here, and all we do is invite more business by setting up and doing things the way we do it. We leave everywhere that we go, I mean, it's not like it's gonna cause any extra garbage or anything. We leave places better than we got it, you know? And so we've taken all the measures on our part. We've been back and forth with Angela about this. She... it's even... it's even come down to where it's... I have a copy of it here, but I have a notice of abatement. I mean, she's like, she's like, either you either stop doing business, or I'm gonna have you arrested. That's what I was told. And so I don't see how that's inviting the businesses at all. But this has been bad, and it seems like every time, every time we came up with an answer, and we complied with whatever she said, then she didn't want to hear it no more. She just wanted to change the subject and go on about something else that was wrong. And so it's just a never-ending circle. We have multiple emails saying of hundreds of people in this area that just want us to come... they want us back. They want businesses like ours in the area. And so I think that there should be a way that we could get together and maybe I could figure out who to make... who to schedule a meeting with and go over with all the stuff that we've already... we've already worked out for Mason County, you know? And so I don't know why you guys should be left behind. You're the only ones. We have our catering permit out of Kitsap County. We're piloting a program for Mason County. Everywhere is covered except for here, you know? There's a calling for it. I mean, there's... the public wants it.
Sir, your time's up. There is... I believe the sign-up sheet, is it on the podium there, Brandy?
Mr. Mayor? I didn't catch one of the words that you mentioned. What was the permit type that you're piloting with Mason County? What did you call it?
A street vending permit.
Street vending, okay. Thank you.
So, if you could provide your name and number on that sign-up sheet or to the clerk, the community development director will be happy to reach out to you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council? If anybody online, please use the raise your hand feature, and the clerk would bring you into the meeting. All right. Last try. Anyone else? I'm gonna close the...
For the series of Chapter 348, is that... what is that? Is that later?
That's later.
That's later in the evening. So you'd be allowed to testify on that at that time.
Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna close the first citizen comment period. We have a amended consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
Move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
By Councilmember Rosa Pepe, second by Councilmember Deener to approve the consent agenda as amended. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None, the motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
I appreciate it.
All right. We have a presentation from Dean Kelly from Bryce Fergus Miller. Dean, we had a number of changes that you asked the design team to make to the Community Event Center, and so Dean's gonna show you the progress on those and what they visually look like. And then we've got a couple of decisions, too, where we want some feedback from the council on some elements in the outdoor plaza. So, Dean, go ahead.
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. We have, working on getting the presentation called up here. So, we're really gonna focus on three areas in the Community Event Center building that there was discussion on at the last time I was here at the city council. The first slide, when we get that pulled up, we'll show you those areas, but we're gonna be talking about the restrooms on the second floor. There we go. So these three, this is the second floor of the Community Event Center. The areas outlined with the red dashed lines are the areas that we're gonna be talking about. So first, we'll be talking about the restrooms on Level 2 and the updates to those. Then we'll be speaking about the addition of additional nano-wall systems, the folding wall systems off of the main ballroom areas and leading out onto the deck. You can see that kind of on the top of the page there. And then at the far left of the screen, the conversion of the former coworking space into an additional meeting room space. So before we dive into the first item, which will be the restrooms, I wanted to draw your attention to this overall plan. When we started looking at this, one of the things that we were worried about was that the conversion from kind of the original bathroom design to go to men's and women's rooms on the second floor would take up so much space that it would really compromise the size of the large meeting room that's directly beyond that on the deck. And in looking at the design, we feel like we found a solution that preserved that large meeting room space. So just wanted to note that. You see that still there on the plan, just a slight decrease to the square footage of that meeting room, but still very sufficient for the purposes of having meetings in that space. So with that, can we move to the next slide, please? So this is our proposed revisions to the upstairs restroom. So what you'll see here is we still have the private restroom stalls within their full height, you know, not looking at partitions or things that are held off the floor, so good privacy within the stalls themselves. And we've added a wall separating the men's and the women's area, where you have kind of the hand wash basins and things like that. There's a couple of renderings shown there as well, is what this would look like. So as you're going from the first floor up to the second floor of the event center, you would see kind of that first image on the right. Still looking to use that rope screen element, which is kind of a unifying element that you can see in the image on the right bottom, connects from the ground floor up to the second floor. It's that screening element that we use on the Level 1 restrooms as well. So keeping that continuity of experience as visitors to the Community Event Center are coming through, but then providing that privacy, once you get into either the men's or the women's side, where it would be gender-specific. We don't have a signage designed yet. We are working on that, but they would be clearly marked there, as is noted on the upper image with men's and women's, so there'd be no room for confusion there. And then we're looking at a full-height mirror being on that wall in between, so that people can have that. So this is our proposed...
Dean, I believe your slide deck has blowups of those two, if Brandy wants to advance the slides.
Yes, if you'll go to the next one, it's a larger view of that image, so...
And then the hallway is the next one.
So, and I think this view really shows what the design team was trying to achieve in giving that cohesive feel with the use of materials, with that rope feature there on the right, and then the screening element there on the left. But if you'll go back just one more, that's kind of looking at the restroom areas right as you come up the stairs. So I'll open things up for questions, comments, before we move on to the second item.
Nice thing about this configuration, we were able to save the conference room in the back, while it's a little smaller. It did allow us that opportunity. Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
Thanks for the design changes. If you go back one more slide possibly, we... oh, another one, I'm sorry, to the overall layout, and we still have two, for lack of better words, family...
Yes.
Restrooms in addition for additional privacy if somebody wants that.
That is correct, yeah. Those would be at the far-left side of the plan, just planned south of the catering kitchen right there, off of the main corridor.
Thank you. Go ahead, councilmember.
Yeah, so this isn't... are we already engineered? Everything's good to go?
We're working on that, yes. So the team is kind of working through the end of the year to complete the construction documents that would be then used for bidding for construction. So we're getting near the end, but we're still in that process right now.
But the upstairs floor, all that's already been engineered, designed, all of that?
Yes, we, you know, we've been... we're about, I would say, 70% through the construction document phase, which is the last phase of design, so working on details now. But yes, we've got kind of a full team of structural, mechanical, all of those types of engineers working on that, and we're kind of at the home stretch, so to speak, of completing this design.
Questions or comments? Councilmember, go ahead.
Could you please go back to the bathroom one that you were showing?
Sure.
Or the... now that's... and so there's a wall, obviously. That whole thing is encased. That one, is that the men's and women's, or is that the unisex?
There's no unisex. One is men's, one is women's.
But I mean, down in the library, it is.
Libraries configured differently in this. There, it's unisex bathroom downstairs. We're not showing the library's bathroom.
Yeah, I was just looking, is that a...
Down the middle...
The men's and the women's.
The other drawing, yeah.
So there's a wall right there.
Correct.
It doesn't really look like... but I know that the wall, and that's where you want the mirror, the long mirror to go.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Just clarifying that.
Sure.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Actually, to pile on to that question, so it's not gonna look like that picture?
Yes, it will.
It will, okay. So we... in other words, if I'm standing outside, I can see into people washing their hands?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Sinks are right behind that white partition. So there's no privacy when you're handwashing? I mean, I'm okay with that. Just wanted to understand.
Security standpoint's actually kind of nice.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, so if you're having a big convention or a wedding, they don't really get privacy?
The hand wash, yeah, you would have this visual, but then there are those two private restrooms.
The bigger ones.
Mm-hmm. That are down the hallway.
Family bathroom restrooms down the hallway.
We kind of think those would probably be your designated for like the bride or, you know, someone who's doing makeup or something like that.
Are we ready to move on to the other two elements? Okay, all right. Thank you, Dean.
So this one, these... there are three areas where we had, at the last meeting, the request to integrate a nano-wall, which is that folding window wall system, so you can really open it up on a nice day, really create that indoor-outdoor connectivity. So we've incorporated those three in these areas that are highlighted in yellow. If you look at the plan on the upper portion of the screen, the one to the far right would be in the pre-function area, and then the next two would be in both the ballroom spaces. So if it's all the way open, and it's kind of large ballroom configuration, you could have two of those nano-walls open out to the outside, or if the partition is set up going through the middle of the ballroom to divide it into two smaller spaces, you would have one of those in each of those areas. So we've incorporated that into the design. The image on the bottom of the screen is the south, the water, or I should say, the north, water-facing elevation of the building, and those areas where we've made the modifications are highlighted in yellow. So keeping within the overall design style of the building and really just increasing the opportunity for connections to the outdoors and more natural light, more glazing, I think it worked really well.
All right. Go ahead, Dean.
Okay. So finally, with our updates here in the building side, this is the area that was formerly the coworking space. So the directive we got from the last meeting was to turn this into another meeting room. So we're showing here in the plan diagrams, three potential options of how this would be configured. We do have a large storage room that's just opposite the corridor from here, so furniture that could be used to turn this room over would be stored in there. We're showing on the left, a boardroom configuration. In the middle, we have kind of more of a classroom situation, and then we have a setup with rounds on the right. And then just a couple of perspective views of that space. Opportunities, working with the city staff here to figure out what the plan would be for AV. We've got a couple of walls identified where we could have large screens, utilize mobile carts like what you see here, to provide some flexibility. We've got a hospitality counter on the short wall within the space. You can see that in the bottom image, and just at the far side of the top image, where there would be some casework, a countertop for coffee drinks, things like that. And then what's gonna be some really spectacular views out of those large windows out to the sound. Of course, we'll have blackout curtains, so that you can control light within that space, but I think it'll be a really nice complement to the other meeting spaces on the floor.
What are the dimensions of that room?
Oh, the overall dimensions. I wanna say it is about 50 by 25, but don't quote me on that. We do have some capacities listed on here. I can't read them off of this screen.
It's more rectangular.
So with the banquet layout, we're looking at about 60 seats, that one there on the right. I could certainly confirm the dimensions of that space, but the overall footprint from what we had for the original coworking space, we've worked within the footprint of that.
This is just showing you three different options. The room is very flexible, and we could utilize it in a bunch of different ways.
Right, I just was trying to visualize how big the space is, and you don't have to worry about getting back to me with dimensions.
Okay.
I'm good with what I see.
Yeah, there we go, so...
60, 44, and 20 to 50 in people.
And then that's capacity within the space, and then, of course, this has a door right out to the deck, so opportunities to kind of have that outdoor access. It's not the nano-wall here, it's a kind of a smaller end there, but still gonna have nice access to that public deck out there.
Hey, Dean? So with the banquet layout, you're saying that we've got same-floor, local proximity storage for all of those banquet tables and chairs?
Yes, that's what we're working towards.
Okay.
Yeah. The overall floor plan, if you can go back to that, one of those first slides. It's quite large, it's kind of the... there you go. So if you just zoom out, so that whole kind of open space that's in the bottom-left corner would be the storage area. So there's double doors that kind of line up right to the entrance of here, as well as kind of doors at the other side. So planning for a big storage space for all the flexibility that the second floor here is gonna need to be able to take on.
That was one of the keys brought out by Columbia Hospitality, who's our consultants on this, to make sure that we had enough room to store our tables and chairs, so that we're not having to rent them. Have them there and don't have the ability to store them. Councilmember, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, you might have said the capacity of the upstairs. How many can that hold up there for the banquet?
In the space at the end that we were talking about?
Yeah, all in, yeah. The whole space where you have all the cha... Yeah, all in, yeah, the whole space where you have all the cha, the tables and chairs. If you're gonna, yeah, the main one.
I think the main one, we were looking at a capacity of, forget the exact number, I want to say 120 or so? Does that sound right to you, Mayor?
It's larger than that.
Plenty, just 120?
It might be a little low, but-
I think that might be low, but that, that wasn't what we were prepared to speak to this evening.
I know, but he's showing us, so why not ask that question?
He's showing us other things, not-
Well, 60, 60 would be the capacity roughly for the-
This room here.
For this space here at the end, that we were talking about.
I mean, you showed double the number of tables, so that would be 120, but I'm sure configuration probably could change that up a little bit.
Got cocktails or, or versus rounds, yeah. Ready to move on to the outside? Okay. So we just wanted to bring back those, those three elements that you guys authorized the change order for, check in to make sure we're on the, on the right path before Dean and his team finishes their, their design.
It looks good.
For the outside, Dean.
Okay, that's fine. So this is the overall site plan, so really, just kind of refinements from what we looked at last time, starting to get into the details of some of the different elements that'll be configured. So tonight, we're going to talk about a few of the specialty items. One at the kind of main performance gathering space, that's in between the Community Events Center and the overwater deck, and then some options for kind of the little more intimate performance space, that's, that's the round thing just to the right of the lift station. So if we go to the next slide. So this is zooming in on those two items highlighted in red. So number one is the swing. So if you've been out to the waterfront in Seattle, and the new swings that were installed along the promenade, we're proposing a couple of those. They would kind of flank the, the performance space that's looking out towards the overwater deck. There's an image of the product that we're proposing there on the right, highlighted in one. So there would be two of those. They'd be attached to the structure of the deck, and kind of on the periphery of that performance space. So you could sit there while an event's having and use the swing, or you could sit there on a day where there's no event, and just take in kind of the beauty of the view from right there. The second item that we're looking at, highlighted as number two, is just outside the kids' area within the library. So we've been showing the idea that there would be something fun, something a little quirky, something that the kids could have fun with. So the original proposal was this, this teeter-totter that's shown there on the left image, labeled as number two. So that's, that's one item that we'd like you to consider, be kind of playing into the whole coastal vibe that we're going for with the plaza, bringing in a wood element, bringing in something fun that the kids could interact with. Alternatively, we could look at a climbing structure like this, this orca, kind of a climbing sculpture. Either one of those, in either scenario, you know, we'd be doing kind of a rubberized matte surface for safety for the play equipment. We'll want to keep that fairly well-contained around whatever feature we select here, so that we can kind of keep things maintainable, and also maintain the amount of grass that we need for our LEED certification, which we're going for LEED Silver on this project.
So the rendering of the teeter-totter really isn't a good depiction of it, because it would need to have fall protection-
Right.
-around the perimeter.
Yeah.
So that's really the decision point, where we're looking for some direction. Do we want to pursue a teeter-totter, or do we want to pursue some sort of a climbing structure type thing like the whale that's depicted there? So, councilor Deener?
So I believe the whale offers more people more opportunity at the same time, whereas the teeter-totter kind of limits the number of people that can enjoy that space. So I'm for something more interactive that will enable more kids.
Councilmember Rose Pepe?
I would concur with the orca-type design, mainly because it's more nautical-
Mm-hmm.
...and relates that to our looking out on the sound.
Others?
Oh, good God, yeah.
Is there, have you seen anything like the orca but a kraken?
No, I have not, but, you know, I, outside of the, the new slide structure there on the pier in Seattle, kind of looks like a kraken. You know, I know there's a very similar kind of orca out at Lions Park, so I think we probably want to do something that differentiates that, but, you know, keeping it within the nautical theme, so I think a kraken could be fun.
And we do see orcas in the sound out here, we don't see too many krakens.
I'm not yet.
True that. It is an octopus, and it offers kind of, with all the tentacles and everything, it might offer some additional fun. My observation.
Sure, and, you know, these, these would not be the finished design, so, you know, really looking for your direction on what you would like to see us pursue, and if it's a climbing sculpture like this, I think we'd want to come up with a few options, you know, of what that could be.
I think that's the way to go.
Yeah, I think so.
Climbing structure.
I, I think sometimes a teeter-totter, I, I always, I grew up on those, and you can really go have someone high, so they could be a little dangerous, a teeter-totter?
Sure.
Depending on it?
Public Works expressed a concern also. All right, Dean, sounds like we're doing a nautical climbing structure.
Okay, perfect, sounds great. And then the last item, so this would be just over to the side of the lift station. So in this area, we've got kind of a small raised platform, you know, not quite a stage, but something that could function like a stage. That's what's highlighted there on the right with number two above it. So that would be kind of this covered platform, and then we also have some kind of bench seating that rings around the perimeter of the space. So the idea here is, it's not as large of a space as the space we were just looking at, adjacent to the main Community Events Center, but you could have a more intimate setting within this zone. We'll have the, the catenary string lights running across that space, that's kind of what the zigzag lines over the circle are representing. But for the, the shade structure, we wanted to talk about two options. So those are what's shown in the images there on the right. One would be kind of a slat structure, so that would provide shade, it wouldn't provide total cover. Or we could bring in more of a glass canopy. If you'll recall, we have some colored glass elements on the Community Events Center. There's one projecting out towards Bay Street for the teens' area, as well as one on the waterfront side for the kids. So the idea is, we could start to bring in some of those colored glass elements in the canopy, and start to link things together. So those are two of the options we wanted you to consider tonight.
And Dean, doesn't the, the glass structure provides more weather protection-
It would, yes, that would be-
Not to shade.
That would be solid.
Yeah. Go ahead, councilmember.
Would solar panels work to illuminate the area, and us not to pay for that?
We have solar on top of the building, I don't know-
Enough to do the perimeter plus the facility?
I don't know, we're generating all of our electricity, but we're generating-
I was thinking of use of the space, you know, I mean, instead of blue or green, we could put solar panels up there, that would-
I don't know that they'd be quite as attractive as-
Yeah.
The colored glass.
I like the colored glass.
They tend to be black. But we do have solar on-
Help our new lift truck and pressure wash them.
Yeah, that was-
Oh, yeah.
More maintenance, obviously, but-
But we do have solar on the building.
Yeah, I think there, there could be some complications with integrating solar here, just in terms of the, the power tie-ins and stuff, you know. I think there probably would be a better opportunity on the building for enhanced solar. We, we're right now kind of providing the, the solar capabilities that we need to, one, comply with the energy code, but also get our LEED credits. The code does require us to designate areas on the roof to be structurally designed, to incorporate additional solar arrays in the future. So we do have expanded area on the roof available for, for solar, the roof for the main building, that is.
Councilmember Deener?
The alternative to glass, what is that, what is that roof made of? What does it look like from the underside looking up? I can't really tell.
Sure, and that could be in a number of things. You know, we, we tend to shy away from things like wood, just for long-term durability, so I would think it's probably a steel element. Having said that, when you want to get that warmth, like, we've got a lot of kind of wood and black steel elements on the building and throughout the plaza. So one, one suggestion might be a metal structure with, they make actually aluminum kind of battens, which are like these, these little elements that have a wood look texture to them, so it looks like wood, but you get the durability of, of aluminum or steel. So I would think it's probably, it would probably be something like that.
That being said, I'm in favor of the glass.
Councilmember Rose Pepe?
I'm in favor of the glass, maybe because you get a little bit more sunlight and light during some of the gloomy time of year. As far as color goes, we have some colors for, from our city map that we could, not map, but design, we could incorporate, to kind of keep the theme going. But I do agree with Eric that, you know, it's just making sure it's sustainable, and, you know, for cleanliness and stuff like that, the type of glass or whatever. But I like the glass because of being able to let more light in, so.
Mm-hmm.
Comfortable with going with the glass?
Yep.
All right. I think that's it.
All right, well, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Councilmember Trump, go ahead.
Dean, thanks for the presentation. I think you're on the right track. I, I like where we were versus where we are now. One thing I'd like to ask in the future, these old eyes have a hard time seeing those little red lines on that thing.
Sure.
Can we either get it sent to us electronically, or maybe the old-fashioned paper handouts-
Sure.
-that we could, we could take a look at a little more closely?
Yep, I think that's fair.
Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely.
It happened, meetings and the package got put together after your guys' council package.
Yeah, I think we met on Friday and decided I'd be coming here tonight then, so-
Yeah.
But for, for future, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and we're moving on now to our public hearing.
One last comment, if I could. If you haven't seen the swings, they're right kind of outside of the ferry. So after you get off the ferry, go to your left, the swings are there. They're pretty cool, and don't think of them as regular swings. They're really nice, and it's more of just a relaxation type. So if you get a chance, take a look at them, they're nice.
Downtown Seattle on the waterfront?
Downtown Seattle on the waterfront, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Good point.
Okay, we are on to our public hearing on multifamily tax exemption ordinance. Mr. Bond, you have a presentation.
Yes, good evening, council and mayor. The city council had requested that, that staff schedule a public hearing on a proposed multifamily tax exemption ordinance. We've been working on this with the city council since July. It's been to several council meetings for discussion, as well as to the Economic Development Committee and the Land Use Committee. So tonight, we have a public hearing scheduled, and I wanted to give a presentation for the public's benefit before they are able to provide testimony. And then we are asking that the city council discuss this and provide further direction, because we have not listed this as a business item. It's, let's listen to the public to see what they say, and then council can direct staff for when they like this to come forward for a vote. So multifamily tax exemption, under state law, there are three different exemptions. You can do an eight-year exemption, a 12-year exemption, or a 20-year exemption. The 20-year exemption is not available to Port Orchard, because we don't have the requisite transit service. And if we did have 15-minute interval service, we would have to adopt an inclusionary zoning ordinance, which we do not have at this time. So that one is not on the table for discussion. The eight-year exemption is a no strings attached incentive to build multifamily housing, whereas the 12-year exemption requires that 20% of the units be affordable, and it is, gives the, the developer those extra four years. The MFTE program works by providing the developer or owner of a building the ability not to pay property tax on the value added to their property for residential units only. And so that's for either eight, 12, or 20 years. The developer or owner would continue paying property tax based on their pre-development valuation, which could be raw land, or if it's a redevelopment project, it would be the existing value of, of the development. And the, the savings to the developer isn't lost revenue to the city, or to junior taxing districts. It is shifted through tax shift, is what they call it, to the rest of the tax base proportionately based on your assessed valuation. And for instance, the, the next slide, I'm going to show you the Overlook Apartments. That project adds about $10 annually to the average property tax bill within the city of Port Orchard. So we have issued seven multifamily tax exemptions previously. Those projects provided several hundred units of housing, but the city council in 2023 decided to repeal the program and kind of hit pause and reevaluate whether they wanted to continue with it. And so here we are, two years later, and discussing possibly bringing that back, the program. I, I shared some data on rent, or vacancy rates, as well as current market rents. This graph is produced by the University of Washington, and shows the, the vacancy rates for the four cities within Kitsap County over the last 20 or 10 years. And what, what you'll notice is that vacancy was declining until 2021, and we had a lot of apartments that were built in 2021, and so now vacancy rates have climbed back up. And that correlates to rents that were climbing until 2021, and have really started to stabilize and kind of flatten out. So the idea here is that by incentivizing multifamily housing, you're increasing the supply of units and, and reducing, or at least stabilizing, any rent increases, whereas we saw a, a long period with climbing rents, because apartments and housing were becoming more scarce. So the, the proposed ordinance includes both the eight and the 12-year multifamily property tax exemption. All of the projects would have to meet one of the following criteria, and that is that the projects be in a mixed-use building, where 40% or 4,000 square feet of the ground floor be a commercial use. So that would be a use that would be taxed going forward, whereas the, the residential units would not be taxed in that building for, for a period of eight or 12 years. Alternatively, it could be a four-story apartment with at least 40 units per acre, which we have not achieved those densities or that building height in Port Orchard, with the exception of the new building that's going up on, on the waterfront. The, the market for waterfront view-type apartments is probably stronger than other types of apartments in terms of justifying the higher construction cost for a four-story building. Alternatively, you can provide middle housing, which is under the recent legislation that was passed, these are townhomes, duplexes, other kind of compact multifamily units that aren't garden apartments, but they aren't single-family homes. And those would be targeted only for small lots. We don't want to encourage the subdivision of big sites into middle housing with tax incentives, because those are, middle housing is typically a three-story product type. And then finally, the, the last alternative would be that your building provides structured parking, essentially any parking located within the footprint of the building, which means you're maximizing the, the use of the land and, and achieving a higher tax valuation per acre long-term. These alternatives, as discussed at previous council meetings, are all intended to improve the city's fiscal sustainability in terms of generating more tax revenue per acre for these project, for these projects. And so we're, we're essentially asking the developers to build a more valuable project. We give them a tax break in the near term, and in the long term, the city comes out ahead, because it is, it is receiving more property tax revenue over time, and puts us on a, a better fiscal path for the, the foreseeable future. For the 12-year exemption, you would have to meet all of the same criteria for the eight-year exemption by choosing one of those four items from the menu, but as mentioned, the state law requires that 20% of the units be affordable. And currently, the proposed ordinance would require that, that those 20% of units be rented at 25% below published HUD fair market rents. I did note in my staff report, we did get comments early in this process from the Kitsap Home Builders Association, suggesting that 25% was too aggressive, and we probably aren't going to get affordable units at that level. And I went into, in my staff report, the reason for that is that HUD fair market rents, they include both, you know, older apartments that might be less expensive than new apartments. And so when, when we were considering the total savings to tenants, we were only looking at the difference between the HUD fair market rent and the reduced rent under the MFTE program, not the, not the actual fair market rent, which is considerably higher than the HUD fair market rent. So the developers are losing quite a bit more revenue than what we discussed previously, and so they're asking that that 25% be brought down to 20%. And, and after looking at the numbers and, and getting some rent data on the Plisco apartments, I, I tend to agree with the KBA that that might be a little bit too aggressive, but I'm looking to the city council for guidance on that. Finally, the, for the affordable units, the units would be limited to persons earning incomes between 40% and 80% of adjusted median income. And so- And so, that depends on the configuration of the units. A studio apartment has to be rented to somebody at 40% AMI. A three-bedroom apartment is 80% AMI and units in between have, have different restrictions in terms of who those units can be rented to at those below-market rates. Finally, the state law requires that we designate urban, that these can only be designated in urban centers. And so we've created an MFTE map and we've proposed the areas in blue be those designated centers. And so there was a little bit of adjustment to this map as we went through the process with the city council, most notably in the vicinity of Bethel and Salmonberry, where those areas were included in the map. And so, this is the final map that appears in the, the ordinance. And so there are a lot of benefits to the multifamily tax exemption program. Increasing housing supply is going to help stabilize the rental market in Port Orchard. It keeps rents from, from rising. The 12-year exemption provides rent relief to tenants in those buildings. It's going to help the city achieve goals in terms of where development is occurring within the city, but also encouraging downtown redevelopment. And a lot of, we have a lot of projects in the city that aren't moving forward right now. They went through permitting and they just aren't penciling because either the off-site improvements that are needed are too expensive and MFTE could change the pro forma on those sorts of projects. The other benefit is that we get a lot of new infrastructure. Not only do these projects pay impact fees, one-time fees for, for transportation parks and our utilities, but they generate sales taxes. People are buying furniture and having it delivered to the house. There's utility tax revenue on, on our utility bills. And we get road improvements, sidewalk improvements, all sorts of, of other improvements. And we've structured the, the program to make the city more fiscally sustainable by trying to encourage higher value types of projects that will generate more tax revenue over a longer period of time. The downside, of course, is that there is this tax shift. And so every time you would approve one of these, it would be shifting the tax burden to the rest of the property tax base in Port Orchard. The other con, at least for the affordable units, is there is auditing and annual reporting and so it creates quite a bit of work for the planning department to run that sort of program. But the, you know, the, the trade-off in terms of affordable housing units is, is potentially worth it. So, we are asking the city council to, to open the public hearing, take testimony on this tonight. I do want to note that the home builders did send a letter late today that was forwarded to you, so you should have received that in your email. And I believe the clerk uploaded it into the packet online. And then, yeah, hold the public hearing and then I'd like to just get your direction in terms of, would you like to schedule this for a vote? And would you like to make an adjustment to the ordinance?
Yeah, I've got one question for you that might help the public who's wanting to testify. In terms of substructure parking, is that exempted as well? I know that commercial, you know, in the mixed units is not, but is substructure exempted?
It, it is when the parking is required for those residential units, but ultimately the assessor has to make that determination. I, I should have also mentioned that one of the suggestions earlier in our process that we did incorporate at the recommendation of the home builders was to explicitly state whether live-work units are treated as commercial or residential units. And so we're saying that they can be considered commercial, but they can only count for 50% of the required commercial if you're going under the mixed-use option in terms of qualifying for multifamily tax exemption.
Thank you.
Public events. We're opening the public hearing on the proposed, where are we here? Multifamily tax exemption ordinance. Anyone wishing to testify on this, please step to the microphone and identify yourself for the record.
Good evening, Roger Gay, South Kitsap resident for about 40-plus years. I'm going to talk a little bit about this MFTE. I don't like to see my property taxes increase when I don't have a lot of control over it. And what the MFTE does is it moves the tax burden from the developers and puts it on the taxpayers. And the thing about the MFTE, and like Washington State Department of Commerce Guide says, an MFTE can shift most or even all of the exempted tax obligations to other properties. Basically, we as the taxpayers pay some of the developers' property taxes for eight or 12 years. I live in unincorporated Kitsap County. I pay Porta Berman, Kitsap Regional Library, South Kitsap Fire District, South Kitsap School District, Kitsap County Roads, Kitsap Public Utility District, plus the State General Property Tax. Everything's affected by the MFTE. You put this out, you're saying, you're, City of Port Orchard taxpayers are going to pay a little bit more taxes. It's not just the City of Port Orchard taxpayers, it's every taxpayer in that taxing district. That means the regional library, which is the whole county. Now, it's a little bit easier on the, on the regional library because they divide up the assessed value of the whole of Kitsap County. So the amount per person's a lot less. But when you start talking to Porta Berman, the South Kitsap Fire District, the school districts, it can make a big difference. One of the things that happens with the taxing districts, the way the system is made up, two things happen. The taxing districts will lose revenue because of foregone tax revenues that are not collected. Very seldom does that happen. Typically, what happens, the developers pass the burden on to all the tax, tax, taxing districts. So at some point, they either lose revenue, which doesn't happen, or it gets passed on. It's possible, it is possible that the total increases in property taxes could be the same magnitude as if the city had an affordable housing levy that was passed by the voters within the city limits. Those in unincorporated areas have no say on that. It's a way to bypass the voters and push out affordable property tax increase through all of South Kitsap. Are there going to be sufficient controls and accountability, especially regarding the affordable housing issues? Will this just result in less revenue for the multiple taxing areas? Please be informed as to what this is really going to do. It's not affecting just the City of Port Orchard. It's affecting potentially every taxpayer in the county. Inform everybody, inform the taxpayers, inform not only your, your constituents, but everybody in the county. My opinion is, if you want affordable housing, then present a plan to voters, get their support for a levy or bond, vice used in a backdoor MFET to raise our taxes without the votes of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to testify on this matter?
Yeah, I was here two years ago, actually, and I heard the same thing about...
Excuse me, could you identify yourself for the record?
Oh, yes, sorry, my name is Amy Durgan. I live in Port Orchard, I have since early 2000s, grew up in Belfair. So, I was here two years ago when we talked about this last time. And I think it was said last time too, that, oh, the availability of all these apartments is going to drive rents down. That has not happened, has not, okay? A one, a studio apartment is like $1,300 a month, like what? Like, that's insane, okay? So, everything he said, I totally agree with, we shouldn't be shifting the tax burden. I think that the City of Port Orchard should actually roll up your sleeves and get to work and find a way to make our city more affordable for your baristas, for your people that work at your gas stations, for your waitresses, okay? Not everybody makes $80,000 a year, which is evidently like our average, which is insane to me. But, you know, on top of that, it's just, like, it's crazy out here trying to pay rent. And I can't even imagine, having done all the work to buy a home, only to watch your taxes increase and increase and increase, so some developer who doesn't want us to even follow the HUD guidelines, for goodness sake, like, so that they can make more money off of people's rent? No, just either, they want to build and develop and they can build and develop and they can pay all the money and they can pay the fee because, yeah, we get, we get money for the infrastructure supposedly, but what about all the congestion? What about, you know, when's the last time you tried to run out on your lunch break to down Bethel, you know? You know, I work from home, I used to be able to go out and have lunch, come back, win my hour, be fine. Now, if I leave my house at lunch, I have to text my boss and be like, I'm on my way back, because traffic is insane. So, you're taking our tiny town and you're making it into this big, modern city, which, okay, cool, if you want to do that, that's great. I missed all the planning where we could have taken an opportunity to be more like Port Towns, or Port, more like Palms Bow. And we decided to go this route, so we're going this route. So if you're going to go this route, commit to this route and make those developers, because how many of those developers are even local? Are they based in Kitsap County? Like, where are these workers coming from? Are these local jobs? Are we employing our local workforce? Like, I don't know. So, if you're going to run the city like this, then you need to charge the developers the fair price and not shift the tax burden on to the people. And I really think that our city needs to do more to try to make property and rent affordable. And that's my piece.
Thank you.
Your comments. Anyone else wishing to testify on this matter?
Hi, my name's Russell Warrenton. Been living in Kitsap County for 58 years, all my life. But anyways, I agree with these two over here. The pros are for multi, multifamily property tax exemption in Port Orchard, while seemingly aimed at reducing rent poses a significant risk to our community financial health. Advocates argue that, that it lowers rent, but this is a short-sighted view that overlooks the broader implications. Several new multi-house projects are underway in Port Orchard. Forest Song is one of the many residence housing projects being planned for construction in the city. Within two to five years, the city expects to be at a total of 1,927 units, which could accommodate more than 4,500 residents in Port Orchard. That's from Nick Spahn's, from the, the city community development director, said in a city, said in a city council meeting on February 13th, in the long, in the long term, the city could add 2,209 units that could welcome another 5,800 residents. At least half of those units could be a McCordick project. I'm not sure about mapping or something like that, so I'm not sure, I didn't really pay attention where, where it came, came about to get this eight to 12 years. But this, let me see, at least half of those units could come McCordick project, probably within the next 10 to 15 years, Bond said, also said at the meeting. Over the next decade, Port Orchard is projected to see an influx of over 10,300 residents. This population growth with, growth will place increased demands on our local services, including schools, fire districts, and infrastructure. By accepting multifamily properties from taxes, we are depriving these essential services for vital funding. Property taxes are, are the likelihood of our community. They support everything from our children's education to maintaining roads and emergency services. Without adequate tax revenue for multifamily properties, the city will fall short in meeting, meeting these needs, leading to this potential decline in service quality and increased burden of existing residents. Moreover, the residents living in these tax-exempt multifamily units will still have the right to vote in local elections despite not contributing to the tax base that funds the very service that they rely on. This creates a imbalance where those benefiting from local service are not contributing to their funding. In a sense, we risk creating a service, I mean, a system where the financial burden falls on single-family homeowners like myself and businesses. It is critical, critical that we, we can reconsider this tax exemption policy and ensure that all members of our community contribute fairly to the service and infrastructure that supports us all. We must prioritize a substantial revenue model that serves the best interests of Port Orchard future. Now, I have, this, these exemptions are like in Seattle, they have them in Seattle and things like that. So, I got, I pulled a section, article out of the, out of Seattle Times. It says, Seattle, Seattle multifamily tax exemption has outlived its use for this. Recently, University of Washington study suggests that the multifamily tax exempt is no longer an efficient way to meet priorities, housing needs. The exception is intended to encourage the construction of affordable housing. However, it allows market rate housing owners and investments to essentially shift their property taxes onto the rest of us, whereas over $80 million in 2024 alone, according to the Seattle Office of Housing. That's quite a bit that they're shifting over. And if you guys want to read this whole article, it's in the Seattle Times, June 2nd, 2025, by Irving Wall. See, as of, as of late 2025, Porter's projecting a deficit in its general funding. September 2025 budget reported that the, Port Orchard notes that the city was not quite there yet. It is a goal to have current year revenue over all current year expensive. Whether it's just a budget adjustment would be, in response to this financial issue, the Port Orchard City has authorized a minorized property tax levy increase for 2025. So, pretty much, what I'm, pretty much what I'm down saying is that it seems like this extra will, will increase my property tax, which I don't really have, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert McGee again, 265 Bay Street. Roger really nailed a lot of the good weed stuff on this and I really appreciate that he dove in on that stuff. I think if everybody in this room, I know everybody in this room is intelligent, if we're being intelligently honest, this is subsidized housing. You can call it whatever you want, but this is subsidized housing and it's forced upon the taxpayer, not at their behest, it's done at the behest of others. It's not really a fair premise. And we can also address property tax quickly. Property tax is all of us who think we own our homes, we don't. We're leasing them from the government. If you don't pay your property tax, they will take your home. So if we're all intellectually honest about those things, I think we can have a better perspective of what this looks like to the taxpayer. You know, the goal of encouraging housing is important. This ordinance risks doing more harm than good to the community. First, you know, there's been some misconceptions, whether it's required or not required by the state. What I've read is the state encourages the MFTE. I don't think that it's required for our city to take this on. My understanding is Squam and Palms Bow both did not opt into the MFTEs and chose to opt out because of the financial trade-offs of it. Second, the program had deferred critical tax revenue from local services. Kitsap County and, and Nick could probably check me on these, I didn't have time to fact-check these figures, but Nick could probably fact-check these. Kitsap County's own evaluation notes exemptions can last eight, 10, 12 year, or eight, 12 or 20 years. Port Orchard's property tax rate about 841 for a thousand assessed value. $1 million exemption equals about 8,400 in lost revenue each year and much more when you include the county schools and fire district, if, if those numbers are accurate. Also, those lost taxes, they don't vanish, they're shifted to everyone else. The Washington Department of Revenue confirmed that when property tax is exempted, taxing districts still collect the same levy, meaning the rate increases slightly for all remaining taxpayers. In other words, the ordinance would shift the burden from developers to homeowners and small businesses, which is just woefully unfair. Fourth, the revenue loss comes at a time when the South Kitsap Fire District in particular is already preparing to seek impact fees to keep up with the growth. So we'll have to deal with that additional tax revenue on top of that as well. By reducing the tax base, the MFTE would only worsen that need, pushing the Fire District to ask for even higher fees or levies just to maintain service levels, which by doing so will increase, they will have to serve more people. Fifth, the public benefit is uncertain. A state audit by the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee, the JLARC, found it inconclusive whether MFTE actually produces housing that wouldn't have been built anyway. Only 21% of units statewide were affordable and nearly 75% were studios or one-bedrooms. That's not helping families. Finally, accountability is very weak. Many cities fail to reward or verify compliance without strong oversight. Port Orchard could end up subsidizing market rate projects that provide little public benefit. For small cities like ours, these trade-offs, they're serious. We can't afford to lose tax revenue, raise costs and residences and strain public safety for uncertain outcomes. If the council proceeds, I would limit exemptions only to areas that truly need investment, which I think you are kind of doing through these zones. Require deeper affordability and family-sized units. Publish annual reports showing real costs and benefits, so we aren't just wildly getting involved in this. And, you know, this ordinance risks becoming costs, becoming a costly developer subsidy is what it's going to come down to. And it's really not the role of our community to subsidize developers. We want development, I think it's great for everybody, but not at the cost of the taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to testify on this matter? Is there anyone online wishing to testify? Do you raise the hand feature and the clerk will bring you in? Last call, anyone wanting to testify? Close the public hearing? All right, counsel? Counselor Chang?
I have a question. We, we do have letters, one from the KBA and also one from Alyssa Whittleton. I think they should be noted. I don't know if we generally read letters for people... I think they should be noted. I don't know if we generally read letters for people who aren't here or not.
Yeah, we don't typically read them in the record, but they're provided to the council, and they're part of the public record.
I just wanted to acknowledge that we got these two letters, and they haven't been read. But we did all get them by email.
Alyssa Whittleton?
It went into my spam, so you have to unspam it.
Question for you, Mr. Bond. Now, even with the twenty percent, like in apartment, that too, I get the property tax that people will carry that burden, but they will too in an apartment too, right? Do they, if there's a twenty percent of people in units, then the rest of the other units will have to take that burden on too?
Well, I think that we're talking about primarily rental units. So renters aren't directly paying property tax, but the entire project would be exempt from property tax for a period of eight years. So the owner of the property is being exempted from paying property tax for that period of time under the multifamily tax exemption.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that twenty percent of those units, the builder won't put that, make a higher, you know, price for a rent.
They couldn't to, they couldn't chip. There's a, there's a, market rents are fluid out there, and the builder couldn't. If the price for that two-bedroom is two thousand dollars, and that's what they're costing, you know, at every apartment complex, some are, you know, they're going to vary a little bit depending on what amenities they have. But just because twenty percent of the units are
Lower.
Lower, they're not going to shift that rent to the other renters.
I would just, yeah, okay, just want to make sure on that.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Wait, I got it, what? Wait, okay.
It's point of order, so.
I'm still talking.
Yeah, I know, but point of order gives me the floor right away.
Okay.
Under parliamentary rules. I just wanted to be clear, we're in a public hearing.
We close the public.
We close the public hearing. Are we beginning deliberations tonight?
Ask, we ask for comments and direction on what, so I'm asking.
Okay.
People are asking Mr. Bond questions.
Okay, I didn't catch that, so thank you for clarifying that for me.
Yeah.
So I can't speak to what a landlord's going to do, but I suspect if they try to raise the rent on the market rate unit to subsidize the below-market rate unit, they're not going to find somebody to rent those units. So I think
Be out of market.
Yeah, the market is going to dictate the cost of the market rate units. The subsidized units are based on published HUD fair market rents, and it's got to be a certain percentage below. And that will be in the contract that would come to the city council. If we have an application for MFT, we take an agreement to the city council that stipulates how those affordable units are priced. They can do whatever they want in terms of the market rate units, but the market's going to dictate whether that gets rented out or not.
Right. And then my other question for you is, can't city council come up with a zoning in some land and say, this land will only have a builder to come in and do affordable housing here? That way, we're not doing the MFT that hikes everybody's property up, but we zone land that is only for a builder to come in and do affordable housing?
I'm not aware of a program that has to do with zoning land for affordable housing. There is what is called inclusionary zoning, where you can require that market rate developers build a certain percentage of lots as affordable. And I think, I don't know that anybody in Kitsap has adopted it. Maybe Bainbridge Island has looked at this. I don't know where they're at with it. But it's a really difficult program to administer, and it's not something that is within the bandwidth of my staff to do. The MFT has modest staffing demands. An inclusionary zoning program is much more complex, both to develop and administer.
Ford?
I thought I was tracking this pretty well. Maybe I wasn't. Is it a requirement or recommended?
It is not a requirement to
It's recommended for eight years, correct?
Well, it's, the state law doesn't do anything other than authorize cities to adopt, enabling legislation to have an MFT program. The Department of Commerce recommends that cities adopt this, but it's a recommendation from a state agency to do this. It is not a requirement. And we repealed it in 2023 because the city council decided that we had had a whole lot of development, and let's let things cool off and see where we're at. And then the city council asked that we bring this back for discussion, and so that's why we're here. This isn't something that the mayor or I, or my department has proposed. This was something that was requested from council for discussion.
Yeah, in the land use meetings, when you're showing the numbers between the gain for the developers versus the loss for developers, and you're giving some examples, I mean, there's a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar swing in some of the examples that you were giving.
Correct.
That is, that's jaw-dropping.
Correct, and I think in the staff report that I provided tonight, I tried to highlight that the swing that I was illustrating was based on the HUD fair market rent, which market rents are actually higher, so the developers aren't doing quite as well as I had portrayed them in those initial meetings. And my meetings with the KBA sort of highlighted that for me, and I tried to explain that in the staff report. So I still think that the ten percent affordability threshold that we had in the old repealed ordinance may be a little bit too low. I think that twenty-five percent is probably a little bit too high. But again, this is city council's legislation. I'm happy to do whatever it is that you prefer.
Yeah, I have, just my fellow council members. I have a hard time with all the increases that we've been putting on everybody to, as Jay said, basically create subsidized development and put more on to, more of a burden on to our residents. You know, we might say ten dollars, but that's ten dollars for one development. You know, you get four of them, it's forty. I mean, things are getting tight as it is, and we all hear it. I mean, walking around, we all hear the struggles out there. If it's so important to us to create affordable housing, then why don't we just eat the property tax? Why are we going to put it on to our citizens? And if it's so important to us, right, to say we want affordable housing out there, it's not built today, it's not going to make a difference. Why don't we just eat it? I don't feel comfortable putting that developers on to our citizens. That's all I have.
Senator Deener?
So I'll take a different tack on this. I'm reluctant to support the program as we know it. But part of that is because of the transportation effects that these programs have, these projects have on our already overburdened transportation system. And so, you know, I know that we collect impact fees, but the fact remains that we're growing faster than anybody thought we would. And so I'm reluctant to try and incentivize that even more. There may be alternatives. I know that there's other jurisdictions that are looking at perhaps a one percent on a building permit that could somehow fund affordable housing or be a contribution towards that. Maybe it's a matter of looking at alternatives and what others have done besides this program. I also note that, you know, if there is movement to have this adopted, there's also, I think Commerce offers an opportunity to have them audit and do your reporting for you, so that might take the burden off you as well. Perhaps, I don't know enough about it and still learning. And then I am concerned that we've got to give Commerce a report in five years that says, how are you doing on housing, meeting housing needs? And I don't feel like this is the right solution to put in that report, but I'm concerned about what does that report look like? So those are my comments and my observations.
Well, I was on the council in 2023 when we repealed the previous version of this that required only ten percent of the housing to be listed as affordable homes or affordable housing. I didn't like the tax shift. I still don't like the tax shift. I can't say it quite as eloquently as Mr. McGee or Mr. Gay out there, bring all those points forward. But as it currently sits at this point, I can't support this. I didn't support it previously, and I just can't support it at this time.
Counselor Rose Pepe?
I'll try to keep my comments brief since a lot of this has been covered. First, a question, Nick. We said we had seven permits issued. How many of those were actually built?
I believe that all but two are either under construction or completed.
So five?
Yeah.
At the time, okay. So when I talked with KBA, they had a couple of comments on it. They said that they were trying to get the multifamily tax exempt to get smaller contractors involved with the missing middle. We don't limit that. I don't believe we can limit that. So we could end up with garden apartment-style buildings. Is that correct?
No, we've modified this to get away from the garden apartments. It doesn't incent those, correct, Mr. Bond?
Correct. The only way you could do a garden apartment is if you go to four stories in a higher density. And to meet that density requirement, at least some of the parking would have to be in a structure. And so you're getting a higher yield per acre compared to the three-story garden apartments that we're seeing built throughout the city.
But we could get the three-story garden apartments.
You could do three-story garden apartments under the
We could get those, okay. So when I also talked to KBA, we talked about this. They were in favor for the small builders, you know, for small local builders, which I don't think may happen here. But more importantly, we are, and this is, I think you brought up, Scott, we're in a period of high growth. And we are playing catch-up with our infrastructure, and we'll continue to play catch-up with our infrastructure for the next several years. So that, to me, slowing down growth is not a bad thing right now. So at this point in time, based on what everybody said, you know, we have to, as a council, take a short-term view and a long-term view. In a long-term view, we need to have good growth come in. I'm supportive of that. But right now, in the short-term view, we don't have the infrastructure to support a continued growth at this level until we get some of our projects done. So I'm not in favor of bringing this forward at this time.
Everyone stole my thunder. But I still have a couple of comments, so if you'll bear with me. I want to first acknowledge that we do appreciate good development because we do appreciate people investing in the city, or I do. And I realize that's a burden. However, I would like to note that we have had some downtown development, like the apartments or condos on Bay Street, which did not use the MFT. We also have the Haven Apartments on Pottery, which also did not rely on the MFT. So while some people are saying that their projects don't pencil out, other projects have penciled out. So maybe they need to do things differently. I'm very much against the tax shift. And I want to thank the staff for actually answering our questions because we haven't always had this data when we were making decisions in the past. But currently, the tax shift that we're seeing right now is about a hundred and fifty-five per year in 2025. That goes up in 2026 to one-seventy-seven, and in 2027, that goes up to two-hundred-and-eighteen per average property per year. And that's based on the projects that we already have. So if we were to add more projects, this would go up. And these would not go down until like maybe 2037. So this is just more data for why I feel I'm very much against this.
I just wanted to point out that, I don't know if everybody knows, but Bremerton dropped their MFT programs, the twelve- and twenty-years programs, nearly a couple of months ago. And part of that may have been more public awareness of the tax shift. But part of it may have been they realized that they were not achieving the affordability with the programs they chose. So just wanted to highlight that even some of our local jurisdictions are dropping that program.
If I could make one point, I forgot. The other taxing districts are affected, the school district and fire district. I understand that the school district doesn't actually lose the total that they are expecting, but it is divided amongst everyone else. So what we've heard tonight is that the tax shift is not only on to city property owners, but South Kitsap property owners, such as the South Kitsap School District, and also countywide for the library. So it is interesting that we are allowed to do this, or the state has empowered cities to do something that could actually raise taxes outside their jurisdiction. And this is not something we are required to do.
Just to add one more thing, I really appreciate you guys coming here and voicing your opinion and how you feel about the multifamily tax, because that's really important for us to hear. So I appreciate that.
Ring the room here. I don't believe I'm going to bring this forward. Staff brought this forward at the direction of the council. Appreciate the work the staff did on this, but I don't see us moving this forward. Miss reading the room, and I don't think I am.
I'd like to echo the mayor, and I hope other council members echo this too, is, because we've discussed this at land use more than once. And I think, I really do appreciate, Nick, you and your staff being transparent. You put a lot of work in this, and the, you know, and I know you're waiting for kind of an answer, which you've gotten. But I do want to say thank you for the time and the effort that you've put into it and the transparency that you've put into it. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to follow up on that, too. I wanted to note for the record that I felt that you were neutral in your positioning on this and that you weren't advocating. So I just want, I want people to understand that, that this wasn't an avocation for a particular approach. Just you were providing all the information we needed to make a good decision.
Right. Thank you for those comments, and if I could just say, I'm a resident of Tacoma where they approve, you know, seventy or eighty of these. And I think I'm starting to feel it on my property tax bill as well. I'm really seeing both sides of this.
Thank you for that. Transparency.
All right, we're going to move on to our business items. The first of which is adoption of an order setting the amount of property tax to be levied for year 2026 pursuant to RCW 8455120. Mr. Crocker, this is you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel? On October fourteenth, 2025, the city council held a public hearing on revenue sources for the current expense fund. The hearing included a presentation and discussion of property tax considered for collection in 2026. State law requires establishing maximum levy rates for various types of taxing districts. The total city, the total city of Port Orchard 2026 property tax levy amount is estimated at four million two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, based upon a dollar nine per thousand of total assessed value. The 2026 estimated isn't final until the Kitsap County Assessor finalizes it. Pursuant to RCW 8455, the city council is required to adopt a separate ordinance specifying authorizing an increase in regular property tax levy in terms of both dollars and percentage increase from the previous year's levy. By this ordinance, the city council would authorize a zero-dollar increase and a zero percent increase from the previous year, exclusive of additional revenue resulting from new construction, improvement set properties, newly constructed turbines, solar, biomass, and geothermal facilities. Staff would recommend that the council support and adopt the ordinance as presented.
Senator Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number dash twenty-five, setting the 2026 property levy, property tax levy and the amount of property taxes to be raised for the budget year of 2026.
Second?
Counselor Deener, second by Councilmember Rose Pepe. Any questions or comments?
Go ahead, Jay.
You know, I just want to make sure I clarify this when I, you know, say it, because some people actually take their property bills from last year and this year and compare them. And I know we're not raising our rate, but if your assessed value, if your house goes up, you will see an increase in the amount of tax collected, correct? Potentially, yes. Okay, I just, you know, it's a fine line, I understand that. But when people go like this, sometimes you've got to answer the question.
It's really complicated
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Because things get voter-approved, get added.
Right.
And then also, we can only collect the amount, okay? And then a shift can happen. So the assessor came by and revalued your house by four percent, but everybody around you, or let's say, bad example. They reassessed your house because it's nicer by ten percent, the value up ten percent. But all your neighbors only went up, you know, five percent
Right.
because their house isn't quite as nice. And so you could see a higher tax bill
Yes.
because proportionately, you're paying that fraction more.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to Yeah. And, and I'm not trying to belabor the point. It's just that every once in a while, you get somebody like that and then say, hey, why did my taxes go up if you voted zero? And there's a, a formula, like you said, that is a little bit more complex, but we can explain it from that viewpoint. So thank you very much, Noah. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Ward?
And a bad example for Jay. He lives on Meerkirk. Let's just be honest about this. I think it's, talking to Noah the other day, it's kind of a pretty good month for council when you're raising proper taxes, zero dollars, and you lower sewer, sewer rates for all the homeowners. That's a pretty good month for, for city council. So, yeah, at least we can smile on that one walking out of here tonight, you know?
Right.
Oh, what can I?
Councilor.
Yeah, just a question on when it says, okay, I think you read it for the new construction, improvement to property. What is this newly constructed wind turbines? I get solar and biomass. What?
We, we don't have any of those things.
I know.
It's just, it's part of the state statute.
It's verbiage.
Right, right here. You have to read all that.
Yes, and I looked that up, but it's like.
If we had them, we'd have to, I think exempt them.
They have the state.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
We don't, we don't have them.
We don't have no turbines.
It doesn't pertain to us.
I don't think so, but just clarifying.
Other comments or questions before you vote? You'd be voting on the adoption of an ordinance setting the amount of property tax to be levied for 2026. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance has passed. We're at item B now, adoption of an ordinance on the mid-biennial review and amendments to the 2025-2026 biennial budget. Mr. Crocker, this is you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And this was a lengthy presentation, probably an hour and a half, the last week's work study. So Mr. Crocker's probably going to hit this a lot higher level.
Yes, I am. So as established by RCW 35A, 34130, the city is required to conduct a mid-biennial review of the city's biennial budget. The review shall occur no sooner than eight months after the start of the biennium, September 1st, and no later than the close of the fiscal year, December 31st. The City Council has undertaken a thorough review of the proposed modifications. The Finance Committee met and reviewed the proposed modifications to the budget at its regular meeting on October 14th, 2025. Additionally, the City Council held a public hearing on revenue sources and property taxes at its regular meeting on 20, October 14th, 2025. City Council held a public hearing on the mid-biennial review on October 21st, 2025, at which during this work study, council provided direction on the modifications. The city focused its criteria for mid-year modifications to those items that are necessary for corrections, are required by contracts, law, or are in need because of large capital and operational budget impacts. The proposed budget amendment ordinance provides for additional expenditure authority of $10,323,144,000, as identified in the budget amendment table included with the ordinance. These biennial budget amendments add, the biennial budget amendments add new positions in the city and currently adjusts FTEs as identified in Exhibit A of the personnel list. These amendments also provide for three additional vehicles to the ERNR fleet and one modification, provide for additional revenue adjustments to fund, balance, and recognize anticipated grant proceeds. I did want to mention that the amendment does include the additional $100,000 for a, a potential grant program that we discussed, as well as additional $77,000 of cap, capital facility dollars for the Storm Annapolis Creek project from our last version. So those are the two modifications that I have completed as part of this amendment here after our workday session. So if that, staff would recommend approval of the ordinance.
Councilor Chenery?
I move to adopt an ordinance amending ordinance number 018-24, the 2025-26 biennial budget for the city of Port Orchard.
Second.
And by Councilmember Chenery, a second by Councilmember Rose Pepe. Councilmember Rose Pepe, you have a question?
Yes. First of all, I just wonder if we could go over last week's presentation. No, I'm just joking. I would want to say, thank, say thank you to staff for the presentation. And while it was lengthy, I think it was very beneficial to everybody. And second of all, for the council, well, some of us were on it, the move to a biennial budget makes the process so much easier to do. And it's greatly appreciated that the, that we did that several years ago. And thank you. I think this is a great move forward.
Comments or questions? All right, you'd be voting.
Question. Does anyone do a five-year budget?
No.
It could be pretty tough. I mean, as, as it is, we're amending all the time.
Just following from Jay's comments, I was thinking, huh.
Never seen anybody.
All right. You'd be voting on the adoption of the mid-biennial review and amendments for the 2025-2026 budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, the ordinance passes. And the sidebar I was having with Councilmember Warden, he wanted to recuse himself from, from this discussion. So I'm going to go get him in the back room now. All right, we're at item C now, which is the adoption of a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Skilling's Inc. for the Ruby Creek culvert replacement project. Mr. Ryan, it's you.
Eric, good evening, council. The existing culvert under the Sydney Road identified as a fish passage barrier with upstream and downstream improvements already completed by the, respectively. The city is now moving forward with the design services to replace the culvert with a fish passable structure. The project will improve habitat connectivity, restore stream function, and ensure regulatory compliance while also addressing roadway utility and environmental needs. Following the competitive RFQ process, Skilling's was selected as the most qualified consultant. Public work started, staff negotiated a contract not to exceed $665,682, with a term from October 28th, 2025, and two optional one-year extensions. The project is funded through a Recreation and Conservation Office, RCO Grant, previously authorized by council resolution. Staff recommends adoption of this resolution and authorizing the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Skilling's Incorporated for the Ruby Creek Culvert Replacement Project in the amount of $665,682.
Second.
Councilor Deaner, a second by Councilmember Fenton. Any questions? And for Mr. Ryan? This is the, once we get that culvert rebuilt, it'll allow us to connect, widen the road, that last segment of Sydney Road down to Sedgwick. So.
Do you know the duration of that project?
We got to design it first. We're in design now.
We'll figure out later.
Yeah. We, we don't have a funding source yet for, for that. Grant, likely a grant. Councilmember Chenery?
So just for clarity, this is an 18-month contract, correct, with the two optional one-year extensions if needed?
So there's also a component probably that we would retain them for construction services through construction with the HPA work and the other environmental permits. It's.
Thank you.
So those extensions are likely, hopefully, we're, in two years, we're out to construction on this.
And then we would extend their contract so that they could do construction without having to enter into a new contract.
Makes sense.
I think it goes without saying that we won't close the road down. We will enable passageways.
Sign's done. It's a fish stream. I can't, I can't promise that. But it would be very desirable.
Yes.
Could be a bridge. I, I don't know what, what the, you know, or a large box culvert.
Or to follow.
Sign's done, and we have a traffic control plan. I can.
Okay, thank you.
Make accurate statements.
Sure, understand.
All right. But this is just to get the design going. All right. Any other comments or questions?
I'm, this, I'll save it for good of the order.
Okay. All right. So you'd be voting on a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Skilling's Inc. for the Ruby Creek Culvert Replacement. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the resolution passes unanimously. All right. We have a new item D, which is a change order for the Marina Pump Station. I talked a little bit about this last week, about the air relief valves. And there's another major component that this is, and I'll let Den, Mr. Public Works Director Ryan speak to this. The reason, we don't like to walk things onto the agenda, but remember, we, we canceled our November 11th meeting for Veterans Day. So we wouldn't see you guys again until November 18th. We want this contractor off the waterfront in November and not on the waterfront, still doing work in December. So the only way to achieve that was to, to rush this to you this evening. So that, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor.
Take it away.
So before you is a resolution to authorize change order. Following the design and procurement, construction began under contract with Stellar J Corporation in 2023. To maintain the progress, report to field conditions. Change order includes replacing a faulty level transducer that was found during construction of existing equipment, reinforcing concrete flatwork with added rebar. So the concrete was poured where the fuel delivery path is. The city rejected it for workmanship issues and failure. So we did opt to go with a rebar reinforcement just to be added precaution through that process. Originally, that was $140,000. The city is only paying less than half of that for the fiber mesh before. Demolition and rebuilding the EDA ramp that was not part of the original design, installing additional air relief valves, which Mayor spoke to at the last work-study session, adding a breather to the backup pump fuel tank. And then we did receive a credit for diesel fuel that was used. The total cost of these change orders is after tax $301,107.79, including taxes, and will extend the contract by 15 working days with the potential for more time depending on valve installation. I do want to reiterate, so there is a savings by mobilizing this current contractor while they're on site. If I would have waited till the next meeting, they would be involved. So I apologize for bringing this at such short notice.
It is with, it is in with, with, it is beyond my change, obviously, beyond my change order authority in here tonight, but it is within the budget of the project, in the contingency, within the contingency.
Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute change order number 10 to contract number C059-23 with Stellar J Corporation for the Marina Pump Station Improvement Project to increase the contract by $301,107.79 from the new contract total of $15,861,587.99, applicable taxes included.
Second.
First of all, I'd like to say thanks for opening the parking. That's been a big benefit. Clearing up the site really looks good down there. I would also emphasize with the council that this is within our contingency. Nobody likes to spend contingency, but we're still within the budget that we're, we're using. So this is good. And this also included the air relief, which was a significant cost to this project, you know, in the contingency. So it's one of these ones where, remember, I said earlier, you know, we have to take a short view and a long view toward the city. This is definitely a long view and a very necessary one. So thank you very much, Dennis, and your staff.
Comments or questions? Well said, Jay. Right, you'd be voting on change order related to Marina, change order number 10 related to the Marina Pump Station project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, the change order has been approved. We had a business item D, which is now, excuse me, consent item D, which is now business item E, which is the adoption of a resolution confirming mayoral appointments to boards, committees, and commission.
I make a motion to approve that. Well, I got to talk about it first.
There's a second. Motion by Councilmember Fenton and a second by Councilmember Teener. And do you have a question or a comment?
Yeah. Well, first of all, since it was on consent and it has a whole bunch of people that you have appointed, and then somebody is even in a five-year term. So I, I thought it was really important to kind of explain some of this stuff. And then I do have a question. Everybody on this board, do they have to live in our city limits to be?
Not, not always. The Building Board of Appeals, I don't believe they have to. And that's a, the Building Board of Appeals are, is a group of individuals that work in the construction industry. And if you have a dispute with the city or related to fire code or building code and an interpretation, they, this, this board, which represents professionals in those various trades, electrical, fire suppression, you know, HVAC, and so on and so forth, they would convene and hear the case between the builder who filed that appeal and our, our building staff, and, and then make a, a ruling as to whether, who is right. So it's a, it's a group of professionals that work in that. And then I believe the veterinarian, so some do and some don't. There's, it varies. So.
Well, it'd be not, it sounds like probably, but maybe not. Like they have to live in the city.
It depends on the board.
Right. Now, do all these people meet together at the same time, or they're divided wherever you're?
There's all kinds of, there's.
Yeah, so you just go wherever you need to go to for a complaint.
Right. Not everybody, right. So the planning commission is seven, correct, or eight?
Seven.
Seven. I think there's two people, one or two people that came up. So all of, there's numerous terms. So every year, roughly at this time, I bring forward names to the, there's various boards and commissions that I appoint people to. And then the council ratifies the appointments that I make. Councilmember Chenery?
One other comment I'd like to make. These are all reappointments, but also these board terms expire on different, at different years.
Yes.
So that's why the mayor brings forth those terms that are expiring in that current year. And that's what these are.
Only a couple of them are annual appointments, and that's the county CBDG program is the only one that's annual. The others, three, five, they vary. Yeah, so.
Do you, do you try and make it a priority to, for city residents to be on the board?
Oh, certainly.
I don't know. I'm, I'm.
I mean, as a planning commissioner member, I think I'm allowed one. I've never appointed anybody not in the city.
Why would we not want, yeah, city residents to do it anywhere?
But the Building Board of Appeals, that would be, that'd be tough.
That's rough.
You know, they're all local contractors that, that I'm appointing, but for them to be a resident of the city would be a heavy lift. And my pool would be much smaller to, to do that.
Right.
I was, I was going to say, these are volunteers and not drafted. So yes, it would narrow the pool significantly. So.
Now, and then you, also my question, as you reappointed you, it says the Peninsula Regional Transportation Planning.
I would love for one of you guys to take that.
But what's the peninsula one? Why isn't it the Kitsap? So I, I just didn't have, I didn't understand this.
So we, we are a member of Puget Sound Regional Council, and I serve on the executive board there. We're a member of a subset of that. So even, from Puget Sound Regional Council, each of the counties has their own regional transportation planning organization. That's what an RPTO is, okay, that funnel into PSRC. There's a separate group that is the Peninsula Regional Plans. So it's Qualum, Jefferson.
Kitsap and Mason.
Kitsap and Mason.
So we are a part of that peninsula.
So we, but we don't apply for, we don't apply for any mon, that, the pool of dollars they get is very small. I, we've never applied for that pot of dollars. We get our transportation dollars from PSRC and a countywide set aside. So those, those competitions happen every two years. But we are part of that group. And I, you know, I tend their meetings periodically because we, it's, we're really don't, we don't have a huge benefit to it, but we are allowed a seat there. And if somebody wants to go to those meetings, they're about two or three hours once a month, and they're up north.
Sounds fun. Well, I was just curious because I, I was going through this, and I don't really remember this last year. And so I wanted to bring this up to get a better understanding.
A lot smaller, I think, last year.
It could have been a few smaller, yeah. But it comes up, comes before you every year.
Okay, I think that.
A lot smaller, I think, last year.
It could have been a few smaller, yeah, but it comes up, comes before you every year.
Okay, I think that.
Beck Ashby used to do the R P T O for us for years, and I loved her for it.
And we debated the utility of even attending those at one point.
But I, I think it's important for us to be knowledgeable of what they're doing more than, it's just having, you know, a knowledge of what's, what's going on with our neighbors. That's really all, that's the only benefit to attending the meeting.
And does this get reported back to us on anything?
If there was something to report, but it's, I'm, yeah.
Sir.
Trying to be nice. It's just not, it's not relevant.
You can find, you can find their minutes online.
Yeah, they, a lot of discussion, this last meeting was around FIFA, and there was a misconception that they wanted to know what FIFA was going to do for them to get people on and off the peninsula without bringing their cars. And that was the only moment in the meeting where I spoke, and I just said FIFA's not going to do anything for any of us. That's for us to figure out, and it's not, your expectation isn't realistic, so, but.
And then deal with our own in our own city.
Yes, yes. But the mindset was a little different there. They're not wanting people. They said, we've got enough people coming up here in the summer. We don't. It was an interesting conversation. All right, you'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution confirming mayoral appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
One opposed? Hearing none, the resolution passes. All right, we are now to our council committee reports. Let me find that list. All right, economic development, tourism, you guys met a week, John's the chair, you guys met a week ago. Fred, Heidi, dear, we talked about M F T E was on the agenda. I remember that. What else was on that agenda, Nick?
Josh.
The same FIFA presentation you had.
FIFA presentation, it was Josh Johnson. He was about an hour of the meeting, that's right. Went into the branding and then the marketing piece that you guys saw last week. So that was, that was, there's your report. That's what I remember. Utilities, did you guys?
No, we haven't, we haven't met. We had the SAC meeting. I'll talk about that.
Okay. Finance has had a lengthy meeting, but it was the presentation that you guys got last week.
Previously reported.
Yeah, which you previously reported. Transportation was this evening, and it was canceled, I believe. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
Land use, did you guys meet?
We did meet, but most of what we talked about was covered at the work-study last week.
Part of it was at M F T E, I believe.
Yep.
Lodging tax, I know John and his committee have kicked off, and they've, you guys appointed the, the folks. At least they're starting to kick off anyway. They're, they're, they're getting ready. SAC?
We met today, and we approved the budget, which will come here just for our approval, according to their procedure. And we don't meet again till February, so since the, the makeup of the committees will change, I would offer that people who haven't been on it before, take a look at it, because it's, with utilities, you do learn a little bit about what's going on. So anyway.
The report's interesting.
They'll give out cookies?
Oh, I, I do, I do need to mention one thing, though. They had a change in their plant manager, and everybody's moved up a step. So I, I'm sorry I didn't get the current plant manager's name real quick, but they had a change, and it's just Randy retired, Screw's retired there as general manager, and everybody's moved up.
This gentleman came from Bremerton.
Yes, yes, he did, yeah.
All right. Coffee with counsel, anything to report there? Was it, have you done that since?
No.
Okay, I think it was.
Got one Saturday.
Who's scheduled for Saturday?
I have Councilmember Tanari, Rosa Pepe, and Chang.
Mayor's report, last week, I had the privilege of, to tour Sea-Tac Airport with the folks from Puget Sound Regional Council. The executive board was invited. And so what we've been experiencing there is a five billion dollar upgrade. And it was in, in the, in normal times, this would have been probably over a five to seven-year period, but they compressed that all into twenty-four months. And does anybody know why? That's just what I learned.
I mean, it's not FIFA.
Exactly what it is. And all of it's going to be wrapped up by, by spring. So that's, that's what all, and none of, none of this is adding capacity to the airport. It's really about in, in, in improving the customer experience. There's a whole new, down on the baggage level, a whole new TSA checkpoint. So that was interesting. And another little tip, so they, they also did a major modernization to the baggage handling equipment. Does anybody have any idea how many miles of conveyor belts are underneath the ground at the airport? It's in miles.
Eight hundred.
No, it's only twelve, but twelve miles of conveyor belts is a lot. So as I said, construction is to be completed prior to the completion of FIFA. Probably the most, the coolest moment is they took us out in a bus, and that erector set thing that crosses over the freeway, we were in, at the base of the runway, and I've got a video of this jet coming right down over the top of me and hit, and going to the, to the runway. So that was pretty cool. So the airport was designed to accommodate, and it was, it was originally designed in the buildings built, now that they've been modernized now, to accommodate thirty million passengers a year. And anyone would guess how many a year were cur, they're currently serving?
Hundred and fifty?
Fifty-three million, though, so it's, so there is a new standalone terminal being designed. So if anybody that's flown Alaska and had the privilege to ride the bus out to the tarmac, there's eight gates over there.
It's D gate, by the way.
Is that what it's called? So they're, they're, they are planning a new gate there. They're going through the permitting, environmental review process for that right now. It's a few years into the future, but there'll be a whole new standalone gate with a people mover connecting to the, to the other terminals. So anyway, that was, that was my Wednesday last week. So I've got unfortunate news to report, and I wish we could have included in the budget, but I just don't, we didn't, we don't have all the answers yet. Last Thursday, we were informed the elevator over at the Prospect Street Building was having problems. Dennis and I went over and rode it, and it was making some funny noises. So we had a contractor come out Friday, and we're, they're going to come out and do some additional testing with putting two thousand pounds of weight in the elevator. And for it to pass, it can't move, was it three quarters of an inch or an inch in forty-five minutes, I think, is what Dennis told me. That, that weight test, how much?
It was, it was like a half inch in fifteen minutes.
It was fifteen minutes? Okay, I had all the timelines wrong. So anyway, it can't move or it fails. So if it fails this test, unfortunately, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to repair, place the lift system in it. If it passes that test, then we're going to be able to possibly do some more modest repairs to it. So unfortunately, you could be, you know, November eighteenth, passing a, an amendment to the budget already that passed tonight, so.
How old is the elevator?
Nineteen ninety is the lift mechanism. Isn't that right, Dennis?
It was nineteen ninety.
Nineteen ninety, but the box itself and some of the components are a hundred years old, so. Building's going to be a little, round a little longer. I even talked to the building department about abandoning it, but since it was constructed with an elevator, it wouldn't, it wouldn't recommend that's not a good idea. It's not, wouldn't be ADA compliant, so. This week, I signed two letters I want to make you aware of. One is for our Intertight Pot Project, asking the gov, that was on our legislative agenda. We're going to ask, we, in the letter, our lobbyist is going to present this letter to the governor's office, asking for that, that Intertight Project be put in his budget. And if it doesn't, then we'll continue to work the process with our delegation and the. And the second letter has to, is a letter for the Association of Washington City Cities, asking me to sign. Any city that has a, that, when we jointly operate a sewer treatment plant, there are proposed changes related to nutrient contract that would cost sublocally about twenty-five million dollars to upgrade the plant. And there's, the, the decisions aren't being made with, without, we were asking for a working group that includes the cities that have, versus just the tribes and the ecology providing input into this process. So we're just asking that the governor convene a working group and that, so we have a voice in this process related to nutrient, nutrient loading. So that is all I've got in my mayor's report. Department heads, Mr. Bond, let's start with you.
I just wanted to share that the, the State Auditor's Office offers a free program for, it's a team-building exercise, and both Noah and my department did that today using the Strength Finder tool, if any of you are familiar with that, from Gallup. And so we did that this morning, and it was a great exercise and a free tool. And if you are talking to other cities, it's, it's something that the State Auditor's Office offers free of charge other than having to buy the book. So a good experience for our department.
Keith?
Yeah, thank you. I actually have two things. As you guys know, I've been working on our strategic plan for the police department. I'm hoping to have that done by end of week or early midweek. So I appreciate those of you that I've already sat down with. If I have not sat down with you and you'd still like to, please reach out. I can certainly meet you after hours because I know we all have jobs outside of this as well. And then the second is we are doing a stuff the patrol car food drive this weekend from eleven to two, the Bethel Safeway. So if you guys want to stop by and either just say hello or help us out, that'd be greatly appreciated. And everything goes to the South Kitsap Help Line.
You like stacking the deck against the other departments with the?
I, I don't know what you're talking about, sir. We're doing a community outreach event.
Going boots and asking for money at the grocery store, you know.
We're just trying to help those who are disadvantaged and also suffering from the federal shutdown.
Chief, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
There was abandoned vehicle that was moved recently, and my question is, how should we report it? Should we do it to, you know, see it, click it, fix it, or nine-one-one? This, the reason I bring this one up is this was right on the corner of Anderson and Old Clifton, and so the sight line for anybody coming out of Old, of Anderson was greatly impacted. It was removed today. It was there for three days. I just was like, I was going to bring it up tonight if it was still there, but I was just like, okay, how should I do this, or how should I let somebody else know to do it?
Yeah, so I'd certainly just contact nine-one-one. If it's in the, the right-of-way, in the roadway, we can remove it for, for that issue. If it's just parked where it's at risk, we can tag it and tow it within twenty-four hours.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Wallace?
So coffee with the council for November, it has been filled, but I do not have anyone signed up for December, so if you would like to, reach out to the clerk's office for Decembers, which is also on the same as the holiday on the Bay. Okay. So we'll go ahead and cancel that meeting and start back up in January?
Yeah, last year as well.
Okay.
A lot of stuff going on that day.
Okay. And then Councilmember Fenton, you had asked about the boards that the mayor appoints for the citizens' boards, committees, and commissions. And so on our website, if you go to the front page of the website and you type in citizen board, you'll get this webpage here, and then you can click on whatever board you want to know more information about. It'll tell you what the, the rules of the board is, if it's driven from a code, what the positions are, if there's required certain positions, who's appointed, what their professional level if required, and when they expire. So the mayor was appointing a term. Looks like for this particular one, there's two that's expiring this year. Next year, there'll be one. The following year, there'll be another one. So annually, like you mentioned, we bring them before you, usually in December, but we had everybody slated for next year, so we decided to bring it to you earlier this year. So again, if you or the members of the public have any questions, it's available on the website.
Oh, thank you.
Well, usually it's in December, but everybody called me back sooner this year. All right, Mr. Crocker?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the mayor and council for supporting us during this budget amendment process. Hopefully you guys found it useful and transparent and understood all, all the requests. And I know I'm speaking for my colleagues here, but thank you for the additional resources, in particular the staffing. Each of our departments greatly need that, so we are very thankful for that. Thank you very much.
Right, Mr. Ryan?
I was going to share the sentiments, and he stole the thunder. Finance group, council mayor, staff is extremely appreciative for recognizing the need. There's some very excited folks out there, so thank you. I wanted to give an update. If you haven't noticed, there's some traffic out on Bay Street, and the reason why is that we've tried to schedule that in the past weeks, and there was notifications that went out and went out, and it started to rain. So we have a window. Wash Dodd has approved the traffic control plan, so the city is going along with this. Normally, we would try to do this at night or on the weekend to not minimize the impact to Bay Street during the commute. We are prohibiting them from working before nine o'clock to get the morning commute. They are working all night long. They're going to work all night tonight, all night tomorrow, during the day tomorrow. Traffic should be back to normal by Friday morning. So it's a great traffic control plan. They did do diligence. We have two days of weather, and we are averting a winter issue that would be prolonged and not very nice. So just FYI on that. Also, I wanted to update, I sent an email about the contractors actually working, everything's formed up, we have a couple days of dry weather, so we are looking for a completion of that project very, very soon.
And this is a new concrete contractor that?
So the same contractor, they brought on a sub with.
A sub, yeah.
A known sub that we checked the references, so.
They're timed hopefully to the charm.
Bay Street demo, they are wrapping up the asbestos lead paint abatement, and we are expecting iron on the job sites Friday or Monday. So traffic impacts on the other end of the Bay Street, so. And that's, that's expected to take, they have seventy-five working days. The contractor's hoping to be done in forty-five, so.
Dennis, I got a question on that for the, the Bay Street with that demolition derby. Is there anything that's good inside of those, in those homes that you, everything's as bad? Okay. I didn't know if you can take a sink or something good and give it to?
They're nasty.
Your nastiness, okay. I was just curious.
Broken, cracked, chipped, not, not.
Okay, good, thanks.
All right, we are done with department heads. We're to our second citizen comment period. Anybody wishing to address the council? Yeah, three minutes, and if you could identify yourself again?
Amy Durgan, and I just wanted to say about the event center downtown that's coming in. The swings are an amazing idea, and I don't think two is enough. Like, figure that out, okay? There needs to be more. And then the kraken idea is genius. Orcas are everywhere. Orcas are boring. Like, I mean, I love them. They're amazing. They're majestic. They're beautiful creatures that we can look at all the time, but an octopus or a kraken of some sort is going to be a more fun toy for kids to play on, and it's going to involve more people. I also really, I like the event center space upstairs in that, in that building. I just wanted to propose an idea because I know that, I watched your guys' planning meeting when you were discussing that building, and you were talking about needing to adjust the workspace upstairs that was going to be for like, for more, or like, people who needed it for workspace during COVID, and then you were going to adjust that. An idea that I had that I wanted to bring up was that you guys might be able to utilize some of that space as a small business incubator to help our local residents get on their feet to try to drive local businesses and help businesses create, you know, just get a, get a foot in. So I think that that would be an amazing use of that space for the city to really foster some kind of program to help our residents, you know, build up their businesses locally so that we're having a more tight local community. So that's, that's what I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody online? Freddie, I don't see anybody online, so I'm going to close the second citizen comment period. We're good to the order, and we do have an executive session to follow the meeting, so.
So I got good to the order. I meant to ask this when the Port of Bremerton was here, but are they planning on driving piles during the FIFA events? We should, we should find out, because if you've ever heard pile drive, well, I'm sure you have, but it's very, very loud, and it goes across the water, and.
They've got to operate during the fish window whenever they do that, so I.
August fifteenth.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. The other thing that, you know, while I'm on the Port of Bremerton, that would be nice is if, if the benches downtown were replaced, I, I look at. if the benches downtown were replaced. I, I, I look at those wooden benches downtown and think of them.
I've benched it to them, so.
As benches that Vikings used to sit on. And they're just, so I'm hoping we can get a better response than silence. And the other thing is the garbage cans down there. One of them, I think, is a 55 gallon steel drum that was converted to a garbage can.
Pointed that out to Commissioner Anderson, so.
Have we got any feedback?
Mentioned, it was the same conversation we had about we're putting money into it. Talked to him about that. I was hoping for partnership, and it'd be appreciated if the, the port did, did some, you know, upgrades there too. And he says, we're in our budget process, just like you, so.
Okay, well, hopefully they're responding positively and including some money in the budget.
Other thing, anything else for the good of the order? Councilmember Rosebecky?
Uh, a couple things to questions, uh, and I just remembered this one. We have, when you come off to Ferry's, there's a wonderful Port Orchard, welcome to Port Orchard sign. And on the opposite side by the library, there's an old Port Orchard, no, there's an old Port Orchard wooden sign there that probably has seen better days. I'm not sure it's as bad as the, the park benches, but, you know, it may, may, maybe time. So if somebody would just look at that, it'd be appreciated.
I can't visualize it.
Okay, and I'll go back and check tonight on my way out of town. So I'll let you know.
It's from 1890.
Do you want it refurbished? Do you want it removed? No, I want it gone. Because we have the other one that's really beautiful. Okay, so I'll, I'll follow up with you on that one here. Um, let's just pop back up. Have we heard any more about the, uh, state, uh, Fish Culvert on Mile Hill? Their plan for that? That was kind of pushed out a little bit.
So that, this is, the, the contractor has a design build, and I think they, correct me if I'm wrong, Dennis. They benefit from finding the, the least expensive alternative. And so they, I think they're playing us against the county, because when I talk to the county, they're somewhat deferring to us. Commissioner Root agrees with me and you guys that there's no way that Mile Hill Drive should be closed. Um, but yet the contractor keeps saying, well, county staff is recommending the road closure and the detour. And we're keep telling the, this must come up every six, eight weeks, the contractor checking back into it. And we keep telling the same answer. Um, detour into Veterans Park, restore the park when you're done. You know, so build a bypass road, because they have to build a bridge. And so they need to build a bypass road, and then at the end of the project, then we're, restore the park. You know, as they take the bypass road out. Um, we've probably told the contractor that four, three or four times. And, um, so.
More to follow. Okay, we're holding to our guns though.
Exactly.
Awesome.
Closing the road is not an option for the city of Port Orchard.
Uh, two more small things. Appreciate your indulgence. Um, mainly because we're not meeting again until November 11th. Uh, everybody on the Facebook page, it'd be great if you put in about Small Business Saturday is November 29th. Uh, they've started putting out information, uh, with the Alliance, and it'd be great if we also pushed it forward. Uh, last but not least, just a reminder, again, on your Facebook pages, remind everybody to vote that it's your right, not a privilege. As of tonight, uh, at 4:30, it's 13.1% of the people in Port Orchard have voted in the election. And the reason I bring this up is if you mail, mail your ballot, uh, in a USPS drop box, it may or may not be, uh, stamped, uh, date stamped in time. So please use a county drop box whenever possible. That's it. Thank you for my indulging me.
Back to the port of Bremerton, they, they were out here working, removing concrete and things on this, the Hank's Heat Metal Site. Uh, today I noticed that.
Yeah, would it be helpful if we wrote a letter, um, to the port expressing our concerns about beautification of their, of their furniture and such?
Good, I, I delivered the message to.
I love these benches. They look old. They look old, yeah.
How's Port Orchard?
I have a couple of questions for the department heads. Uh, Chief, appreciated the time the other day with getting together on the strategic plan. Um, I do have a follow-up question on that, though. Can you give us an update on the Rite Aid situation?
Uh, I know that Code's aware of it, and, uh, we're still working with the property owners.
You notice that, I, I noticed that there was some movements, some fence changes and that type of thing here just very recently.
That's the property owner.
That's the property owner. It's, it's private property. So what we've been doing is engaging with the Hart team and trying to move those folks along. Um, we do have a trespass agreement with the property owner, but, um, there, there's some additional complications outside of just removing people. So we're working on that piece.
Okay, thank you. He really needs to fence the property and prevent by maybe even like share, they did over at Sherry's and dropping some ecology blocks along there so you can't get your RV, um, or motorhome in there.
For tents?
And fencing, yeah, both, so.
Next question, Director Ryan. Um, had several citizens complaining about our, uh, speed prevention bumps that are not designed for that in our roadways from where developers have torn up the roads and put down the cold patching, and it's in horrible shape. Sydney South from Berry Lake heading down towards Albertson's is one of the areas. Uh, I heard one recently from, up on Salmon Berry as well. It's within the city limits. Who's responsible? Is the developer responsible for those cold patches in this time, this time of the year?
Developer's responsible, and we are the police. So we're the enforcement, and we are hitting them hard, uh, this week. It's erosion control.
It's the rain. The rain causes them to sink.
Uh, we did have a meeting with our contractor, um, uh, TCI, um, out on Sydney. They, we specified hot mix. Uh, there's a secondary developer working on a sewer line there. We're having enforcement issues there, so. Um, it sounds like they are going to contract with our contractor now to pay the back right. So I did do a follow-up with staff, and we'll, we'll take a look at those.
Great, because it's, uh, it's not going to get any better during the wintertime, and it'd be nice if we had a little smoother transitions, uh, for our citizens and school buses. Thank you for that.
Unfortunately, all through winter, it's just going to be an ongoing issue and keeping on the contractor, because every time it gets super, it's, it's cold patch. It, it's going to move around, and it, it's heavy rain like we just had, which we're going to have a lot more of in November is going to, you know, that, we just got to stay on them to, to go out and, and patch it and patch it and patch it, so.
Mr. Mayor? Make it so.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember.
For the last couple of years, um, Scott, Jay, myself, all of us have kept mentioning projects and art, you know, throughout town and lack of, whatnot, and I keep hearing, well, we can just put 1% of a budget or a bid has to go towards the arts, correct? Is that, is that something that we do?
Um, we don't have a, any such programs.
No, we don't have it, but we could have it.
Be an ordinance if that's what the council wanted. You'd add it on to.
We continue to say it, though, and I think that we should try to create an ordinance and get that started going into the next year. Because, um, it doesn't really do us any good, you know, to sit here and complain about not having it. And then they could, you know, we keep hearing that, well, we have to add that in or make an ordinance. I think we should, as a council, I think we should band together and, um, try and drive that.
Yeah, I've been.
Any feedback on that, Scott, you think, or no?
I think it's definitely worthwhile a discussion. I think there's a number of alternatives we should look at.
I think so.
But I think, um.
I, I think that would be a fabulous retreat topic, you know, to, to bring that forward. I think, uh.
Would it be a work study or a retreat?
I think a work study.
I think a retreat would be enough. Give, give it the quality of time that it might take.
I'm trying to get a, um, group together. Even Morrissey was on it. And, um, some of the people that, um, like Georgina, she's already put a whole art thing together at another town that she lived in. And so I'm trying to get information of how we can, um, band together and, and for then the city can. And I like your idea, you know?
I mean, road, road projects.
Yeah, to do the projects for that.
I agree with you that we should have some set aside in those projects.
When I, when I talked to Eric about it, it's, it was from based on Seattle where they did a 1%. And so that, that is the starting basis, and I don't have enough, you know, reflection on, on that, on their law or ordinance.
I, I'm aware of.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I'm aware of the 1% for the arts program in Seattle. I don't know the details of it, and I think they might have like an arts commission or something that helps administer that. But the idea is that you take, when new development occurs, they have to spend 1% of the total project cost on art, either onsite or in the community. Um, but I, I think we would need probably a white paper kind of outlining how that works, and, um, perhaps that's something that the, uh, our attorney can help us with.
I, I'd love to see this as, as a retreat item for sure. Um, and I think city beautification at large is really what we're talking about, and not just road projects, but other sites as well, waterfront.
We had that, um, when it comes to retreat, retreat time, I should just add that to the list?
Yeah, I'll try to remember to.
I mean, I can add it to.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, we've got a heavy, it, we need to have a good retreat this year. And, and a part of it is that, is what, what is our work plan? And what is the budget priorities and, and all of that? Because we've got the mid, the, it's the heavy lift budget coming this next fall. And so we need you guys, I need, you know, to work with you guys and, so what are our priorities? And I'm, I've already got a, a list out of my office that I don't have with me, but, you know, we're nearing, okay, if we get $26 million in capital in this budget, Noah and I are already talking about the next biennium likely has $57 million if we, you know, if we do all four of the, the major projects that are still out there. I don't know that that's realistic, that we can pull all four of them off in 2027. But, so we need to talk about that, you know, and we need to, and Noah and I, and we've talked a little bit at the Finance Committee too, of the funding plans for those four mega projects. And what I'm talking about is Bethel, Bethel Phase One, we've got the, the Intertie, we've got the pathway, and we've got the community center. And, and so, uh, all of those are all important projects. And then from there, not, not just this budget, but in all of these mega projects that we're talking about, and Bay Street Two, they took 10 years, you know? And so what is the, what is the next, what is, you know, what are our next priorities beyond that? I think some of them are other segments of, of Bethel, but, um, we need, you know, staff and I need direction too of, of that. What are those, out, you know, because that's, that's where it starts, is the council saying, okay, no, this project or this program are the priority, and we've got to start planning for those because it takes a long time to deliver on a Bethel Phase One or.
It does, but unfortunately, as we, um, drive around the city for 10 years waiting for a project to be, you know, uh, be developed, you know, we're putting money aside, money aside for things, we're neglecting other areas. So I think we need to, like Scott mentioned, the beautification of things, we need to start making that a, making that a big priority. So.
To echo that, I think it's more of a parallel path instead of one project, one project, one project. It's one project, one project, and along with that project, an element of that project is the arts or the beautification. So it doesn't all have to happen at one time, but it can happen along, along with it. So that's my two cents. I think retreat's probably a good idea.
And I'll just add my two cents more again. I know that we have a, when we first established the Code Compliance Fund, we recognized that we would tap into that, but the following budget year, we would, we would re, um, re-institute costs into that. We've put the costs back into that. So we, beginning of every fiscal year, we had the same amount. And I think it'd be worth talking about seeding a fund for art, and then as we burn through it, trying to re-seed that fund.
And I think it'd be great to have a commission, an art commission, too.
Just take staff to, to do that, so.
Well, well, how about, um, citizens to do that?
But if we're involved in it, then it, we've got the, like our planning commission, other commissions, we've got the Open Public Meetings Act requirements, we've got, um, you know, all of those things with, when, when we're, when we're touching it, it just can't be a loosey-goosey group of people meeting if the city's putting resources into it.
Well, for sure, but we still.
I think we've all agreed this is a great retreat item to talk about.
Yeah.
All right, so we are about to, well, we'll be adjourning after an executive session pursuant to RCW 30, 42.30.110. Uh, and the topic is related to real estate matters. So, uh, we, I don't think we'll be more than 10 minutes, so about 9:05, I'll come back out and adjourn the meeting with no further action to be taken.